Good evening. I am Michelle Sturgis of the NAACP. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, and the News Gazette, I welcome you to tonight's candidate forum. Tonight's forum is for Champagne City Council District 1. Because of the COVID pandemic, we are unfortunately not presenting this forum in person. You have, you will receive many, many questions were have been received for this forum. Similar questions which have been submitted have been consolidated and consequently your question may not be asked precisely in the way you submitted it. Due to limited time, we may not be able to get to all of the submitted questions. After the forum, this video will be available on the League's YouTube channel and Facebook page in a few days. You can also find this video in the Nonpartisan Voters Guide at voterschampagne.org. VoteChampagne.org, sorry about that. Each forum will be linked to the candidates' information. It will also be broadcast by UPTV. The UPTV schedule is available on the City of Urbana website. I will be your moderator for this forum. The order for candidates is in alphabetical order. Therefore, Azad Kopp will open. Clarissa Nickerson-Forman is next, and then Davion Williams will close. We're still waiting on Kopp, but that's okay. I'll keep going until maybe he logs in. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement. I would then ask questions submitted prior to this forum. And candidates will each have one minute to answer these questions. At the end, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Candidates will kindly refrain from any negative attacks on the other candidate, will not mention the other candidate by name, and will speak only to what they plan to do if elected. Since we're waiting on Kopp, we will go ahead and begin with Nickerson-Forman. You can go first with your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Clarissa Nickerson-Forman. I have represented District 1 for six years. I am a mother, I'm a wife, I'm a community resident. I'm a lifelong resident. I grew up in foster care in Champagne, so I've lived everywhere between Champagne and Urbana. I really just want to take this moment to let you know that I have been effective. I want to continue to be effective, and I want to continue the work that we've already began. And I hope, if given a chance to do that, I can continue to show my effectiveness and to continue to be a voice for people as I have. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, you're next.
Good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the NAACP of Champagne, and the News Gazette for hosting this forum. For those who may not know me, I am Davion Williams, candidate for Champagne City Council for District 1. It is my hope to communicate and to be visible to citizens in District 1 so that I can meet the needs of people because I am aware the needs not known cannot be met. My ultimate goal is to create a collective community, a collective community through the principles of unity, self-determination, collective work and responsibility, and cooperative economics to empower the people to take ownership in their own community through engagement and promoting collaborative collaborations, one house at a time. With these principles, we will focus our energy on issues that deal with community health, community safety, and community development. In specific, the Garden Hills drainage, streetlights and sidewalks, food securities for families, gun violence and economic awareness and development within low-income family individuals. Each of these, each of these issues affect us all directly or indirectly. But it, it, but it work, but if we work together, we can fight these issues together and make our district and our city a better place. I hope to gain your support in the upcoming election in April the 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will begin our questions. The questions will be alternated in between. If one goes first, and then the next person will be, be available for the next question first, okay? First question, I will start with Nickerson-Forman. What are the most important issues facing the city today?
I will say, because we're post-COVID, that the most important issues still remain to be gun violence. It is spreading throughout the community, and I believe that is still a huge problem. And economic development is a huge problem. I believe the economics plays a huge part into the symptom, which is gun violence. And I believe if we spend more of our effort into changing the economics and quality of life for everyone, that we will see a change in the gun violence. And then we can work on more important things like infrastructure and things that are important to, you know, people's everyday lives.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Williams. What are the, what are the most important issues facing the city today?
I would say poverty and economical development as well. With the property, I'll also go back and say gun violence because they all kind of go hand in hand. In a situation of property, sometimes we, young individuals may feel like they need to do something extra to raise, you know, to have money or to be, have some type of income coming in. So, maybe they want to go out and maybe, for example, sell drugs on those lines. But yet, with that, the reason why we, we're selling, we're selling drugs is because we're trying to make income, make something, make ends meet within our homes. So, you have the thing about those, that narrative when it comes to those individuals in those areas. So, if we find a way to create a place, a safe, a safe place that where we can create financial literacy within individuals, families, and young, and young adults, we will be able to fix the gun violence issue here in Champagne.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, you're first this time. The same question, it's not the same question, but it pertains to the first question asked. So, how would you tackle each of the issues you just identified?
Just like, like I just recently mentioned, having these issues, we have to understand that there's an economical component with it that some people are lacking. So, if we can create programs that can help the awareness and the, the, for economic advantages for those, for these low-income families, we better find solutions when it comes to gun violence and maybe, and with property, property as well.
Same question, Nickerson-Forman.
You might repeating the question for me?
Sure. It pertains to the first question that, that you guys answered. How would you tackle each of the issues you identified, and that was in the first question?
The first way I would do that is, which is really, really important to be a city council member, which is to work with other council members and to be able to get them to do and implement the things that you would like them to do. And I believe that the best way that we can do that immediately is by implementing the LIFT program. The LIFT program is a, is a coalition between Unit 4 RPC and the City of Champagne that is going to be a wraparound program to address the gun violence that is happening. And it's not, it's, it's a unique program because often we snatch the kid and we say, "We're going to help this kid." But in this program, we're going to help the mother, the boyfriend, the family. And I think that the LIFT program, which I, I hear it being like lift people into self-sufficiency, I believe that's the key to get that started.
Thank you. Next question, Nickerson-Forman, you're first. Could you describe your district in terms of its population and its needs? And this is a two-part question. What would you say is the biggest need in your district? If you need me to repeat any of the questions, just let me know.
I think the best way to describe my district is it's very unique. So, people don't know this, but we have the highest income with downtown, and we have the lowest income with the north end. But we also have campus, and oftentimes campus is left out for whatever reason. They just, people forget about, you know, campus and their needs. And so, we spend so much time talking about, you know, what we, what we can do to transform, you know, the community. And, you know, one of the hardest hit places we have right now is campus. And how do we get those students off campus in downtown and to, to utilize that, those resources when we talk about losing, you know, revenue? And I think that's one thing that people often forget about, about District 1, is that it is a part of campus, but it is a part of downtown, which brings in that revenue. And I think that it gets a, you know, it just gets left out a little bit.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Williams. It's a two-part question. Could you describe your district in terms of its populations and its needs? What would you say is the biggest need in your district?
Well, I would say the historical value when it comes to the, to the, to the downtown area off of First Street and, and, and that area. And allowing us to look at that, look at that history when it comes to the, I guess you would say, the demographics of that area, what African-Americans in that area, how they had, had a pinnacle at one, at one point, when it's successful as, as comes to economics. Along that, along, along, along with that, there is, District 1 is a very diverse community as, as I walk around and talk to constituents and see that it's not just, it's just not filled with African-Americans, but yet there are whites and then there are blacks living amongst each other as well. So, that's, that's how unique it is to me. With that, if we can just somehow find a way to, to get us to have the same mind, I think we'll be all right.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Williams, you're first. Are there any infrastructure needs in your district, and which are the most important?
Infrastructure needs in my district, I will first start with, first I would, the Garden Hills area when it comes to that flooding issue there. That, that is a main issue that has been going on for over, I would say, 30 years. And that's something that I feel like with, that has been neglected. And, and the people and those homes that are living there have, have, they had just, just been, for lack of a better term, been destroyed due to that flooding, for that area, the flood. Also, you see a lot of abandoned, a lot of abandoned and condemned homes. District 1, I feel, is somewhat underdeveloped. And if we can find ways to use incremental development with, with, with citizens that are, that are, that are part who want to help, that will kind of help bring the morale or the, just the beautification of District 1.
Thank you. Nickerson-Forman, same question. Are there any infrastructure needs in your district, and which are the most important?
Um, I think most times, everybody thinks of Garden Hills and the infrastructure that is needed there. But the Garwood neighborhood and the Garden Park neighborhood, which actually borders the Neal Street Quarter, is something that is on the Capitol Improvement Plan. It is something that was very vital to that area, and it has been pushed back. And it's something that needs to be advocated for and pushed for because of what can come out of that for both neighborhoods. And so, I believe that, you know, Garden Hills is moving up. We're going to be hitting Phase 2 soon. But we also need to not leave behind those other areas, which will continue to crumble. And that infrastructure for Neal Street Quarter and the gateway to what we're going to be doing in that area is super important. And so, you know, that needs to be advocated for and needs to be continued to be at the top of the Capitol Improvement List.
Thank you. Next question. Nickerson-Forman, you're first. What are the most important changes that need to be made in the Champagne Police Department?
I think one of the main things that needs to happen at the Champagne Police Department is that the Champagne City Council members need to take ownership of what is happening. As a city council member, I cannot tell you that I know everything that's going on at the Police Department because that would be a lie. I am not given the information that I need, and it's going to take four other council members standing up to make that happen. And if anybody knows what happened on May 31st and they can let me know, I'm still waiting. And I think that that's what's important, is that being honest and transparent also means admitting when you don't have all the facts to make all the correct decisions. And I think on this one, we don't have all the correct facts to make the correct decisions. And I just, I believe in being completely transparent, honest about that. And I believe that once we get past that and we can know what's going on and we have all the information, then we can make an informed decision. But I don't believe it necessarily starts at the Police Department.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Williams. What are the most important changes that need to be made in the Champagne Police Department?
I believe the most important changes needs to be some level of transparency when it comes to things that are, that are really going on. A lot of community members don't, don't necessarily know or they may not understand because of certain how things are worded or, or, or certain, or certain ways. Also, I would say more police community involvement would allow that to kind of remedy this, those, that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Williams, you're first. Urbana has a project where they are attempting to find other ways to respond to police calls for service rather than automatically sending a police officer. What do you think of, what do you think of that program? Could such a program be implemented in Champagne?
I believe that is a great program. I'm actually looking at a program right now out of Richmond, California called ONS, which is the Office of Neighborhood Safety. And within that program, they talk, it's, it's a, a community-based program that allows members of the community to, to police their neighborhoods. With that, it comes also with a program within that program called Operation Peacemaker Fellows. And that allows those who have been a part of gun, have been, you know, gun, have been part of gun violence, those have been maybe convicted, allow them after they, after they, after they come out of jail to come out and be mentors with those who have been somewhat subjected to gun violence. And so, it's kind of like a Big Brother, Father-Son thing, Big Brother thing going back from. And so, it kind of gives them accountability departments that allow them to, to make better decisions. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Williams. The city suffers from an enormous amount of gun violence. What is the city not doing that it could do? In your opinion, why are there, why are there so, why is there so much gun violence in Champagne?
Well, like, we, like, we, I, we talked about this before. I believe there's so much gun violence because the, of property, of, of low-income individuals in these areas. I was, I was watching City Council meeting, and they talked about a young man who was talking about, he, he said that he would never not have a gun. And that's, that's something that we can't do. And we, we have to go back and figure out why, the why on these issues and understand culturally what's going on in these neighborhoods. With that, I mean, like I said, the ONS program would be a great program to infiltrate, not necessarily infiltrate, but to come in and, and to just be friendly and have somebody that may, that may, that looks like me to help me address issues that are, that are affecting me.
Thank you. Nickerson-Forman, same question. The city suffers from an enormous amount of gun violence. What is the city not doing that it could do? In your opinion, why is there so much gun violence in Champagne?
Something that we're not doing as a community is we're not talking about the shootings. Most times, people address the shootings as the ones where you've had somebody hit, so you know they died or they've been hurt. But what we don't talk about is the amount of shootings that we have on a daily basis that don't hit anybody. And I believe that keeps the public from understanding what's really going on and that these shootings are not just targeted in black areas. They're not just black-on-black crime that people want to, want you to believe that that's what's happening. There are, there are people being shot on Devonshire. So, you know, that, you know, we have to change that, that theory that, you know, it's a, it is a black problem. We have a gun violence problem in this community because people keep bringing guns to basic fights. And that's what continues to happen. And the more that we go into COVID, and the more that we go into warm weather, and if people don't understand conflict resolution, we're going to continue to have gun violence in this community.
Thank you. Nickerson-Forman, same, this is questions for you going first. This is actually a question, it's kind of like a two-part question, okay? So, first part, do you have any ideas for addressing neighborhoods like Holiday Park that are seeing an increase in gun violence? Second part, are there other governments or organizations that can be enlisted in the fight against gun violence?
Well, um, as far as addressing kind of Holiday Park and their gun violence, what everybody is seeing is you're seeing gun violence spread out. And nobody really started caring about the gun violence until it started getting close to Staley Road and Duncan Road. And where is Holiday Park? Right on Duncan Road. And so, that's an issue that we have as a community, is we wait until it gets to higher community or higher-income communities before we address it. This is something that we have to take a hold on as a community, you know, in whatever neighborhood it is in. And that's the main problem that we have. And so, it, it becomes a struggle of how do you, how do you make a problem a priority before it gets to a certain point? And we're past the point of, you know, it being a priority across the city. And I think that that's a huge issue.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Williams. Do you have any ideas for addressing neighborhoods like Holiday Park that are seeing an increase in gun violence? Are there any other governments or organizations that can be enlisted in the fight against gun violence?
I believe we should talk about these issues a little bit more, like, like we've been, like, like it's been previously discussed. Being transparent with gun violence and talking within our communities and taking a hands-on approach when it comes to, you know, fixing these, fixing these issues. Yeah, on the other side of the question, I'm not necessarily sure how to answer that question, so I'm going to pass on that. Thank you, though.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams, you're going to go first on this question. Have you observed any project or policy in another city that could be tried in Champagne?
I think I mentioned this before about the, about the Richmond, California, when we talked about the ONS, the Office of Neighborhood Safety Program that would, that would help, help the community police, help, help the community have a community place, community-based organization that can kind of help secure and make our, our area safe.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Nickerson-Forman. Have you observed any project or policy in another city that could be tried in Champagne?
Um, actually, citizens tend to send you a lot of information because they want you to learn about other programs. And a U of I student sent me a program called The Better Way in Phoenix, Arizona. This is years ago. And I mentioned it to the mayor and Andy Cornstrom of the township, and it actually was something that was implemented. We now have that same program in Champagne through township where we take homeless people, we pay them, we get them on the street, we get them off the street, give them jobs, and help them get into more self-sufficiency. So, I have experience in getting information from somewhere. And maybe it's not important to most people, but once you get to talking to other people, it's important. So, one thing that I would like to mention is that the Green Space on Hedge Road, a project that would be really good that they started in Harlem with green spaces, with putting parks. That's something we've been thinking about doing as we wait for the Phase 2 of Garden Hills to be finished.
Thank you. Nickerson-Forman, you're going to go first on this question. In addition to racial and ethnic identity, how can our city increase its awareness of other kinds of diversity such as age, gender, LB, LGBTQI identity, and income inequity?
I think one of the first things we can do is we can utilize some of the things we already have in place. We have LGBTQ liaisons through different departments of the city. We have a city council member that is an LGBTQ liaison. And so, if we could actually use some of those resources we already have to put that together, I think that would be important. And, you know, you know, one of the things we're bad at is using resources we already have. So, I think that is something that we could really, you know, we could really do. As far as the income gaps that we have, I think that money management and credit management and budgeting is something really important for self-sufficiency. And it's something, you know, that I learned in Effective Black Parenting, which was a parenting class. But I wish we had that to offer to single mothers and to young, up-and-coming people who are trying to make it, because I think it could change their lives. And I wish it was something that the city just did and offered free.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Williams. In addition to racial and ethnic identity, how can our city increase its awareness of other kinds of diversity such as age, gender, LGBTQ identity, and income inequity?
I believe we should, we should focus on getting to know one a little bit more. I feel like sometimes there is a misunderstanding when it comes to what, what, what I actually am as a person opposed of what you may see or on the outside. With the, with the, with the equity piece, putting programs with the Housing Authority that will allow people to learn to be financially literate as opposed of just, just, just being there or just, or being on the, on the program but not necessarily benefiting from, benefiting, 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 excuse me, benefiting from it. With the program placing, like I said before, economical component when it comes to how to save money, how to, how to want to learn to own a home and, and, and everything that goes in with that.
Thank you. Next question. Mr. Williams. What role do you think a civilian review board should play? And this is kind of like a two-part question. So, what, first part, what role do you think a civilian review board should play? And what rights should a review board have, such as subpoenaing, the presence of police officers, or their discipline records?
This is a good question. Can you repeat the first half again of that one more time for me?
Sure will. What role do you think a civilian review board should play? And then the next part of it is what rights should a review board have, such as subpoena, the presence of police officers, or their discipline records?
Well, the, 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 the review board should be of, of community members, not necessarily those community members that may be somewhat connected to the city, but those who are actually, not actually, but those who are just your day-to-day community, community members to look at, to look at these things and to have an understanding about what's going on and to be able to look at issues or these, or look at issues with a, without being biased. Also, the, on the second half of the question, should they have subpoena power to talk to, to maybe? Yes, yes, I believe they, they should, just because you want, you want to get the whole entire story from both sides. And so, it would only be fair to talk, that you'd be able to talk to somebody and talk about their issues or have those, those, those disciplinary things on the table to see, are you actually, are you fit to maybe police here in Champagne?
Thank you. Same question, Nickerson-Forman. What role do you think a civilian review board should play? It's two parts. And second part, what rights should a civilian, civilian, I'm sorry, civilian review board have, such as subpoena, the presence of police officers, or discipline records?
One of the lovely things about being on the city council is you have one vote. And so, when you speak, you get to, you got to have eight people. And we didn't have five people who wanted to give subpoena power. We didn't have five people who thought it was valuable for citizens who've been impacted by gun, by, by police officers and any type of community trauma and gun violence to be included in those panels. All the people are handpicked people, and they're deciding on whether or not they're too anti-police or to, it's, the, the process is not authentic. And that is why our citizens' review board is, is, is hard to really swallow. And the subpoena power is just, it was, it was something that should have done, and it should have had the willpower. But you have to have the willpower and the political power to get something done. And if everybody is bobblehead and everybody's just doing whatever they think is best because that's what looks good, it's really hard to pass that type of policy. And I think that's something that citizens really need to understand. It takes five votes on the Champagne City Council. And we didn't have five who saw the value, everyday citizens who go through issues with the police being on that board.
Thank you. And this is going to be our last question before the closing remarks. What experience, and this is for Nickerson-Forman, what experience and or skills do you have that you could bring to the council that adds extra value?
I think one of the main things that I bring is, I was a teen mother. I grew up in foster care. I slept in West Side Park. I've had a very difficult life, and I've had to bring myself up from that. I've had a very difficult life and I've had to bring myself up from that and and raise six children. And not just that, but I use the resources in this community that are here every day that I'm pushing to residents that I go to their door and help them when they don't have heat. Those are things that I myself use. I never recommend something that I haven't used. I've learned how to, you know, catch the bus and how difficult it is to have groceries there. So when the MTD is in front of us, I'm asking them, did you carry groceries? Did you have two children? Did you do a transfer? Those are the real life questions I can bring. It's not hypothetical. It's not what I think it is. I'm not acting. I don't have to put on a persona. I've lived this and I think it's important to have that perspective. Now, is that perspective always valuable and can some people just benefit from politicians? Absolutely. And I think that's why it's important for voters to have a choice.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, same question. What experience and or skills do you have that you bring to the council's job that adds extra value?
Just the simple fact, I feel like that I am, I'm not a politician. I I'm just someone who wants to to serve. And and that right there is key to have the heart to serve, to be able to to cooperatively and cooperate to cooperate and to be collective with everybody and and finding out needs and to just just be open and available. Through my, through my life in Champagne, I've been here since the age of six. My my mother has 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 benefited from certain resources that are within the community. So knowing about these things is imperative. I believe some people don't know. Some people are just not aware of what the what all the resources we actually have, but be able to create a web of resources so that when if if something does happen on a weekend, we don't have to necessarily call the township and say, and they give us such and such and such and such about hours. So understanding that, we we have, we have to be involved like that.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing. The closing statements will begin with Ms. Nickerson Foreman first.
I would just like to say I've represented District One for six years. I think anyone who tells you anything about me will tell you I rep District One really hard. But I don't just go hard for District One. I use my voice on the city council to also help people in other areas of the community because they also need backing, they also need help. And ninety nine percent of the issues that I deal with have nothing to do with District One. And so the ability to know what's going on across the city and to have people who are willing to communicate with you is important. And I've enjoyed my time on the city council. I've enjoyed helping people. I've enjoyed making policy that changes people's lives. And I think that it's important to continue something that you start. And there are so many things unfinished, like the Garden Hills Drainage District, that's something I'm really committed to getting moved up from twenty thirty. The Neil Street Quarter is something I'm really interested in. And the Martin Center is something I'm really passionate about. And I would like the opportunity to get the grocery store at Bradley and Neil Street. That is something that I would love as a girl who grew up in Champagne, going to the manners and walking the Love Corner. I would love the opportunity for those things to happen. And so I see my time on the Champagne City Council through the lens of the little girl I was to make our city better and to make our community better for everybody. And so this is not just for me, but for all the little black girls out there who had a baby when they were a teenager or who was a single mother who thought she couldn't make it. You can do anything and you can maybe even be on the city council. So I want to continue that and I want to continue to support women and support women in all that they do and support them and just show that. And I think that, you know, the opportunity to continue to do that, I think we could really do a lot. And I think with ten years on the city council, I probably could have a nice little resume of things I've done. But help people. If I can just give one thing to voters to let you know, I have helped so many people and that means more to me than anything that I've done and any of my time on the city council. Thank you very much. And I hope that I earn your vote because you want to vote for me and not because you want to not vote for someone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, closing remarks.
As 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 a citizen of of Champagne, I grew up here and I have children here. And the ultimate goal is to create a safe space for all of us. Not not just for one area, but for for Champagne and to hopefully to build webs of resources that will allow people to become, to elevate themselves consciously as it as it comes to economical awareness, as come just to for self development and just being able to just being a better person here in Champagne. I have, I have this thing, I I I say that Champagne is a bubble city. Let's let us, let us all bubble up together and and as as a good champagne and be successful and finding ways to allow those who are who are on the lower end of the spectrum to come up and and grab a hand out to to help someone else.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters of Champagne County, the NAACP and the News Gazette for sponsoring this forum. Thank you to our timer, Michelle Cooper, who has kept us on schedule. Again, thank you to Jonah Von Behrens, who has put this forum together. Just a reminder, it's not time to, it's not too late to register to vote April the sixth election. Information is available on the county clerk's website. Please vote. You can vote by mail. You can vote early or vote on April the sixth. Because turnout is expected to be light, please check your polling place for April the sixth. Please vote. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, good night.